The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Joint Board on November 9th. Boy, I forgot. Lost track of days already. If everybody could rise, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with announcements, and I'll start over to my right. I'm sorry, introductions.
John Smith, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Jacqueline Olson, District Two, City Council.
Andrew Howe, Council.
Jeff Cagiano.
Cheryl Tebow, District Three, Council.
Sebastian Penietto, District One, City Council.
Sue Tyler, District Two, City Council.
And then in the audience, we have... I see Maria Byrne.
He's over here.
Yep, and I'm not missing anybody up there, so we're just missing Orlando. Oh, yeah, Jolene Lusitani. Want to say hello, Jolene? Is your audio working?
Hello, Jolene Lusitani, District One, City Council.
Thanks, Jolene. All right. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 12th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments, changes, additions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to move to the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to take anything off the consent calendar?
I'd like to make a motion to pull Item 2A from the consent calendar for further discussion and clarification purposes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nothing else to take off? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the rest of the items on the consent.
Second.
Marie and John, second. Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, motion carries. So, we don't need another motion to speak on this one, or I think we do, right?
If he pulled it off, now the discussion, if there's discussion that you want to have, you can...
Yep, so discussion. Why don't you start, Sebastian?
So, this item here is for additional appropriation totaling $185,500 within the sewer operating and assessment fund. It makes mention from the previous meeting for an asset and data management program. So, I was just looking for further clarification if this will provide for efficiencies or long-term cost savings, or if there's any more info that anyone from the finance group can provide.
Rob?
Good evening, I'm Rob. Good evening, I'm Rob Longo, Superintendent of Water and Sewer. Thank you for asking questions on this. It is, a portion of it is for data asset management. It is a program that we are purchasing. We went out to bid about a year and a half ago. It is a company called Cedero. We went through a bid selection process, and what it's going to do is help us take our GIS to a new level, which will allow a customer interface with it, as well as, if we're cammering a sewer line in particular, that camera footage will stay with it. So, we'll actually have the ability to look back at things that we've done in the past. It is half of the portion. Water is picking up the other half of the portion to complete their GIS, as well as build in a database. It'll also help us down the road where, on the water side, if we have a water main break, which we have a lot, we'll be able to have staff out in the field who will identify the valves they close and tell our customer service reps exactly the area of the outage, when the water comes back on, if a fire hydrant is used, where there could be discolored water. The water portion is also under a mandate, under a state statute, that we have to have a data asset management plan. We have one now, but it's not anywhere robust as what it needs to be. If we do not have one in place, we will be eliminated from state funding going forward. So, it was a combined effort with the merger of the two departments. The sewer aspect is a little bit smaller than the water side, but it's going to give us a lot more. A lot of the work we still do, unfortunately, I hate to say, is paper-driven. There's a lot of notes taken. We found this problem, we found that problem. This will give every employee out in the field a tablet where everything goes into a database. The managers will be able to see exactly the workflow and create efficiencies out of it, and know where to, you know, predict where there could be future problems. So, I hope that answers your questions.
It does, thank you. I appreciate that information.
Yes.
So, this is all in, the tablets and the software? Okay, and is there an annual fee after that?
There is an annual fee, but it's marginal, nominal, compared to the upfront investment, obviously. So, I think the initial upfront is $350,000. Every year, as we add layers to the GIS, and we add new infrastructure, and we find things. You know, a lot of our maps are archaic from the '60s and the '20s. They, you know, contradict each other, so it's going to be a lot of that. And even on the sewer side, you know, Public Works and Engineering has always done a great job before the merger. However, a lot of this stuff contradicts itself. So, as we start to identify this, it's going to get rid of the paper-driven. So, but there will be an annual, and that will go into our budget for next year, our budget requests. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Questions? So, we need a motion for this specifically, Therese?
Yes.
So, I'll entertain a motion for two.
Second.
That was John and Cheryl on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, motion carries. All right, we're on to item agenda number three, and Therese, were you going to read these?
Sure.
Thank you.
To transfer $15,900 from the general fund contingency account for the city's share of the 2021 Bulletproof Vest partnership grant.
Move approval.
Second.
Cheryl, approve. John, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Approved. Number four?
To make an additional appropriation of $31,800 within the special grants and donations fund for the 2021 Bulletproof Vest partnership grant.
Move approval.
John approves.
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Sebastian, so...
No, I didn't hear.
Any comments, by the way, or any discussion? Forgot that last time. No? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number five?
To transfer $18,425 from the general fund contingency account for the Controller's Office part-time wages.
John moves.
Second.
Andrew gets a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number six?
To make an additional appropriation of $2263,795 within the general fund funded by revenue as of June 30th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
John and Cheryl, seconds. Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, motion carries. Number seven?
To make transfers totaling $1264,000 within the general fund to operating transfers out as of June 30th, 2021.
Move approval.
John?
Second.
Cheryl gets a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries. Next?
To transfer $100,000 from the Capital Projects contingency account for Shrub Road professional fees.
Move approval.
John, second. And Sebastian, seconds. Any discussion on this one?
Yes, through the chair, I do have some discussion, because we, as a city, had invested quite a bit into the procurement of the land originally in the partnership using, with the...
Indian Mark Nature...
Thank you, I wasn't sure what title they use now, and also the grant money. And at no time, because I was on the Board of Finance at the time that we did that, did we hear about this $100,000 for demolition of the property? And from what I read in another document, this might be contingent upon the grant award. So, we probably would have known that in the budget. It's coming out of contingency. So, I was hoping somebody could, I'm looking around, could shed a little bit more light on this, just to see this additional $100,000 come out, and why this is the city's responsibility when there is a partnership with a nonprofit? Or is there additional grant money we could go after? Just to see this already, we just put, I believe, $350,000 into the capital contingency, and now we're already having to take $100,000 out. So, John, I know I keep looking at you, but is there anything you could provide for additional...
I understand the Environmental Learning Center was the one applying for the grant.
Thanks, Diane.
So, we did receive a grant. The appropriation that the Board of Finance and the council had approved, I guess it was two years ago, was $2.1 million. That is for the purchase of the property, and that also includes the appropriation for the grant. It has come, this request came from the purchasing department, because they're trying to put together some proposals. They've gone out to bid to have some demolition and some other environmental work done, and this is the estimate that they've come up with right now. So, this would be in addition to the sales price of the property.
So, this wasn't known before budgets that we'd have to do this?
Not to my knowledge, no.
This one hurts, because we did, as a city, spend a lot of money already on this project, and then just, you know, it's like one of those little things, you know, what else will we uncover down the road? So, I guess we just...
What was the state share?
The state share for the city was $670,800 against that $2.1 million appropriation.
And I'll just speak from living pretty close to there, and actually running there yesterday in the woods, is obviously this needs to be done with where we're at. The building is deteriorating very quickly. So, I agree with you that it's nice to know these things ahead of time.
Right, and hopefully, there's, you know, if we can find out if there's any more issues we're unaware of, that would be helpful. So, thank you for that additional information.
Any other discussion?
I can, through the chair, I would say, I was on subcommittee that looked at the parameters of this grant, and I would agree with Cheryl. I know costs have taken some by surprise in regards to this project. It is a great place to consolidate for our conservation goals for the town, and the neighbors, as Jeff alluded to, some of the neighbors in that area are proud to see that area being preserved, and as opposed to some other projects that were proposed. So, that's my thoughts on that.
Thanks. Any others? We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, right?
To make an additional appropriation totaling $1,927,795, $750,000 within the Community Development Block grant, $827,795 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund, and $350,000 within the Capital Projects Fund as of June 30th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
John?
Second.
Cheryl? Any discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And...
And the next item is just the monthly revenue and expense report from the Controller.
Thanks, Diane.
Good evening, everyone, and I want to welcome the new council, and I wish you the best over the next couple of years. I will add, you know, if there's anything that I can do to help, any questions that you have, please reach out to me, my staff. More than happy to help get you the information that you need. I know the mayor and I did speak earlier this afternoon, and one of the things that we thought would be a good idea would be to schedule some sort of an orientation, so we can have like a little outline that can go through the appropriation process, the budget process, and I think that would be helpful, especially since we're getting into the budget process, really, within the next couple of weeks. So, just offer that out to you and let you know that we're planning on doing that. So, welcome, and I look forward to working with you. Couple of things, you do have the financial, well, before you actually even go to this year, one thing that I do want to mention, there were a lot of motions on this agenda at the end that appropriated a lot of surplus funds to reserves. That is something that we do every year for the new members, and when we look at closing out the fiscal year-end, we'll look at where we have some surplus revenues and some expenditures, and we will reserve them into either capital project funds. One of the other things that you did was we replenished the Economic Development Fund, and mostly it was done for capital project purposes and for, and also the Melrose Stabilization Fund. The one thing I do want to say is when we look at this, we want to make sure that we stay within our fund balance range. So, we are well within our fund balance range, per the Board of Finance ranges 12% to 15%, and we're well within that at 14.5%. So, I just wanted to let you all know that even though we moved all this money around into the reserves, that the general fund is still within the guidelines that are set by the Board of Finance. With that, just want to talk a little bit about this year. For those that are new, the current tax revenues actually have been coming in very strong. The tax collector does a great job collecting taxes. Right now, we're at 56.8% of the budget. Last year, we were around the same, at 55.5%. Right now, the only thing that is reflective in here, we still have to collect the second half of real estate and personal property, and then the motor vehicle supplement bills will also be going out for January 1st. So, that, when we know what that is, that will increase the revenues as well. Two areas are coming in well over budget, building permits at 58.1% of budget through the end of October, and then the conveyance taxes are at 84%. And I did mention at a previous meeting that we did have one large conveyance, I think it was in September or August that came in. That was quite substantial. I think it was around $140,000, $150,000. The one other thing that I do want to mention on the state grant side, there was, there were two grants that were eliminated in the state budget. They were pilot grants. They were replaced by a tiered pilot grant, and with that grant, the city actually received $458,000 more than was anticipated. So, that we actually did receive. So, it was really nice to see that that grant did come to fruition. You do have graphs there. I just kind of like to keep a little picture of where we were this year to last year. Investment earnings are on the lower end. You know, we do the best we can, but interest rates right now, we're not that good. Then the only other thing I do want to say, we do, we will be filing an extension for the audit. We've had some staff turnover between that and the keeping up with all of the grant funding for the ARPA and the FEMA. Put us a little behind, but we don't anticipate that it will be beyond the January 31st date. We may have it by the end of December, but we just, we're filing an extension just in case, just to give you a heads up on that. And we did file all of our final reports for the CRF funds. We did receive, for the new members of the council, a total of $1.16 million between FEMA and CARES money, and we did allocate and appropriate all of that through the end of September. So, that final report was sent to the state. So, other than that, if anybody has any specific questions, I'm more than happy to take them.
Question, Cheryl?
I'm just wondering, could we get a copy of where those funds were appropriated, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
And then the only other thing I'll just mention, for those that, in case you're interested, if anybody wants a hard copy of the budget or the audit report, just let me know. If not, for those that don't want paper, it is available on the Controller's page website. So, you can go to the annual reports section or the budget section, and everything is right there. And again, if you want a hard copy, I will get that to you. Thank you.
One more question for me, but I just want to make sure, anybody else have any questions for Diane? I don't think we talked about this today. $217,200 for ARPA Task Force, the consultant, $150,000? I'm just curious. Other, generally, the other funds?
$50,000 went to the Health District, and then there was $10,000 that went to Community Services.
Okay. Good to know.
I just had one other question. In the legal fees, it, there's about $13,000 spent on the pension. Was that an evaluation process, or what did that encompass?
That was for the contract with Burnwell.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. All right. Is there any other business to come before the meeting? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Cheryl?
Second.
Second, Andrew, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Usually do five minutes in between, right? So, 7:10, we'll reconvene for the city council meeting. Thanks. We'll start the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, November 9th, and I'd ask everybody to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me just first say thank you, everybody, for coming and welcome. Very interesting experience here, that I'll say upfront, with a brand-new mayor and six brand-new city council people. So, I don't usually ask for apologies, but I'm going to ask for apologies upfront as we run this meeting as efficiently as we can, and I'm going to rely on Therese to really help us with that. We don't really have any opening ceremonies planned. We have a lot of other things to plan to get ready for this meeting tonight. So, I'm just going to ask the city council members to introduce themselves, and I'll start on the far right with Jackie.
Jacqueline Olson, City Council, District Two.
Andrew Howe, District Three.
Cheryl Tebow, City Council, District Three.
Sebastian Penietto, District One.
Sue Tyler, City Council, District Two.
And we have Jolene, I think. Can you?
Jolene Lusitani, City Council, District One.
Thank you. So, we'll go to agenda item number two, approval of the meeting for October 12th. Have a motion?
Move approval.
Cheryl, approve. Do I have a second? Second is Jackie. So, on this one as well, too, just for the other council members, obviously, none of us were at the last meeting. I did talk with Therese beforehand. We can go ahead and approve this. If you don't feel comfortable, you're welcome to abstain from the vote. However, many of us were at that meeting, so it's fine to go ahead and do that. So, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, motion carries. Agenda item number three, public participation. We'll start with those that signed up here. I know we have some people online as well. First on my list is Laura Minor.
Good evening. Mister Mayor and members of city council, congratulations. I'm Laura Schlessinger Minor, 88 Anderson Avenue, Bristol, Connecticut. I've lived in this city for over 37 years. In that time, I've been an active member of many organizations, as well as having an impact through my 29 years of working for Wheeler Clinic. I'm a recipient of the Bristol Plus Award, Positive Leadership and Unselfish Service, and I'm a proud Bristolite. I'd like to wish any Hindus in attendance who are watching a Happy Diwali. And I'm here tonight, though, to express my disappointment at the choice of location for last night's inauguration. I've attended many inaugurations in this city, always in a Bristol public building where all were truly welcome. At last night's ceremony, a strong message was sent that some citizens of Bristol have more power than others, and some beliefs are more important than others. Seeing pictures of my elected officials in the newspaper this morning, being sworn in under a large Christian cross, was unsettling. Want to give a little history as to why this decision isn't just a small issue for me. I'm Jewish, and I have experienced my share of discrimination in my lifetime. In Bristol, I've worked hard to ensure that people who are in the minority because of religion, race, sexual orientation, gender identity, or other beliefs or attributes have been treated with respect. I've tried to educate with compassion, knowing that some actions come from ignorance, some from lack of experience, and some from hate. There have been bigger events to deal with in Bristol, such as the Ku Klux Klan march in this town a few decades ago, and there have been smaller battles, ensuring that my daughter's time off for the Jewish holidays weren't counted against her inner school record, or educating principals and teachers about how to make non-Christian children in our schools not feel excluded during Christmas, for Christmas carols, Christmas crafts, et cetera. And also complaining along with the Muslim parents about the many days that the school cafeterias had only pork options for our children to eat. I've watched our city receive international coverage four years ago, when our school system was bullied by a local pastor and his supporters into not allowing a Muslim speaker present at Northeast Middle School. I've also, in the past, watched many gay, lesbian, transgender youth leave our school system because of horrific bullying. I've participated in efforts in our community, our school, to correct that. I helped start the Bristol Mayor's Task Force on HIV/AIDS and HCV 30 years ago. Still sit on it, back when a gay hairdresser in town, Leon, died of AIDS, and no funeral home in this city would perform the funeral, except O'Brien. I spent six years of my life living in an autocratic country, Kenya, where if you said the wrong thing, you could be deported. I know what repression and abuse of government power could feel like. During the past six years or so, I've lived in an America in which I felt scared sometimes. I've seen less respect for those who are different from the majority, and I have become fearful of the erosion of some religious and other liberties. In recent years, I've seen in Bristol a positive creation of a diversity council, which I hope continues, more efforts in our school system to encourage respect, and also many community events which have promoted understanding of other cultures. In 1790, I'm going back a few years, Moses Sakeses, who was a member of the Hebrew congregation in Newport, Rhode Island, wrote a letter to President George Washington soon after Jews became full citizens in this country, saying, "Deprived as we heretofore have been of the invaluable rights of free citizens, we now, with a deep sense of gratitude to the Almighty, Disposer of all events, behold a government erected by the majesty of the people, a government which to bigotry gives no sanction, to persecution no assistance, but generously affording to all liberty of conscience and immunities of citizenship, deeming that everyone of whatever nation, tongue, or language equal parts of this great governmental machine." President George Washington responded, promising not only tolerance, but full liberty of conscience to all, regardless of background and religious beliefs. President Washington had been committed to religious liberty and equality earlier. In 1784, he wrote about the hiring of staffers' households, saying, "If they are good workmen, they may be of Asia, Africa, or Europe; they may be Mohammedans, Jews, or Christians of any sect, or they may be atheists." Our Supreme Court today in Washington, DC, has carvings on two walls which include the great lawgivers of history, including Moses, Confucius, and Muhammad, holding the Quran. I have worked hard professionally and personally to ensure that all people are treated with the respect they deserve. I'm a justice of the peace. I'm proud to be one of the first JPs in this whole state to reform civil unions for same-sex couples and then marriages, as our state led that way. So, it's with experience and history that I speak to the inauguration's location. While I understand that there are those who did not want to wear masks during the brief inauguration process, and thus didn't want to be in a public school, the fact that the location was moved to a church which does not welcome as members our LGBTQIA citizen, and one that has not participated in, to my knowledge, any where interfaith services are accepted, it's uncomfortable, to say the least, for non-Christians like me to sit through many events in Bristol where only Christian clergy giving vacations and benedictions has been our history. But in a public building, at least, we know we're technically welcome there. Having a public swearing-in of all the elected officials in an exclusionary church is an insult. Would it have been okay? Would you, would, we've done it, and everyone felt uncomfortable, sorry, felt comfortable in a mosque or a Hindu temple? By selecting a church whose beliefs are antithetical to so many Bristol citizens, your term has become, in a disturbing way, even if it was by accident or ignorance or convenience. Thomas Paine wrote, "Tolerance is not the opposite of intolerance, but it's the counterfeit of it. Both are despotisms. The one assumes to itself the right of withholding liberty of conscience, the other of granting it." By disregarding the dignity of so many Bristolites who don't adhere to Liberty Baptist Church's tenets, you've tarnished a bit the city's reputation as being all heart. I hope that while you hold power in this office, that the ability, you recognize that you have the power to decide who will be respected and how. And I hope truly this was an error in judgment and isn't an indication of what we'll see in the future. I hope that in Bristol City Hall, other public institutions, and throughout all of our neighborhoods, the beautiful diversity of this city will be embraced. May all of us open our hearts and minds to all people of faith and those of no faith, and to all sexual orientations and gender identities. May we continue to learn about and from each other, and I hope to do that with all of you. I stood next to you for a few hours on election day. I stood next to you for a few hours on Election Day. We talked. And to help others come to a place where we're truly greater because of our understanding and respect. I pray that you will truly be the elected officials for all the people of Bristol. And I close with another quotation from our first president, who said, "Government being, among other purposes, instituted to protect the persons and consciences of men from oppression. It certainly is the duty of rulers not only to abstain from it themselves, oppression, but according to their stations to prevent it in others." Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, I have Ann Barron, and one thing I forgot to mention is please state your name and your address when you come up. Is Ann in the audience?
Hi, my name is Ann Elliott Barron. I've lived here in Bristol since 1955. I'm a 70, excuse me?
Address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, 54 Havilland Street in Bristol. You're welcome. I'm a 70-year-old Democrat who this year voted all Republican. And I think I spoke to the mayor before the election about it. I just wanted to come up and voice my opposition for the burning of biohazard medical waste here in Bristol. I don't think it should happen anywhere in Connecticut. The, it's going to pollute the water, it's going to pollute the air. There are carcinogenic chemicals and lead that are going to be released in the burning of this waste, and I don't want it in Bristol. Biohazard medical waste includes the burning of amputated limbs, organs, blood, and aborted fetuses. So I don't, I don't want to pollute our city. I don't know how much money is involved, and I don't know if it's a done deal or not, but if there's anything I can do, I shall. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Lauren Vernaglia?
Hi, everybody. My name is Lauren Vernaglia. I live at 79 Beechwood Lane in Bristol, and I am so incredibly happy to see every single one of you sitting up here. And I'm going to put myself out there for the entire city to know that I and my wife, who I've been with for 24 years, went to the inauguration at the church, and I did not feel excluded at all, nor did my wife, nor did my two children. Do we face adversity as members of the LGBTQ community? Absolutely. Again, I've been with my wife for 24 years. We've faced adversity through all of that, but we don't fall victim to it. We kind of move through it and do what we need to do, and we've built a life that I'm happy to have. And I have to say that Mayor Caggianno and anyone else who has knocked on my door, in fact, Mayor Caggianno called me on the phone. I didn't ask him to call. He called me. Any conversation I have ever had with you, I have never once felt as though you had any issue with any sort of minority group. I've always felt accepted by you, accepted by all of you. I have proudly changed my party to Republican. And maybe I'm in the minority in the LGBTQ group, but I actually know quite a few who have done the same. So I am here to say that the event that you guys had, yes, I understand it was at a church, but it was a venue that could hold a large number of people, and there was an option to not have to wear a mask. And frankly, I'm far more grateful to not have to wear a mask in a building than have to worry about, let me just say it, who's in my bedroom. So, that being said, I appreciate being able to be at that event last night. My children did. It was great for them to witness, and I am so proud to have all of you here. And I do not feel at all slighted by any of you and the choice of venue. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a last one on my list. I know that new meeting for many of you. Anybody else in the audience like to make any comments? I'll go to the Zoom meeting. Anybody online that would like to speak under public comment? Nope, hearing none. We'll move to the next agenda item, number 4, Announcements. I'll start on my right again. Jackie, do you have any announcements?
I do not.
Andrew?
Just a quick one. The Veterans Council tomorrow is holding their Armistice Event to honor the ending of World War I. So it's going to be a great event over at Hooker Court. If anybody can make it, they'd love to see you attend.
Cheryl?
Yes, hi. On Tuesday, the 16th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., is Tipicop. And this is an event that they annually do. It'll be held at the Spare Time Bowling Alley on, at 177 Farmington Avenue. And so I'm looking forward to going over and having a good time in, in helping this benefit. So next Tuesday, the 16th. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick notice that the last Tuesday of this month, November 30th, is Giving Tuesday, and it's an opportunity to support the many nonprofits and community organizations that we have here in Bristol. We're quickly approaching the holiday season, as I'm sure everyone up here knows, and it's a busy time of year for everyone. But some of our services, in particular, food banks, shelter services, such as those, need extra attention, especially this time of year. So please keep them in mind as we, as we move into the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
They already took my announcements. Thank you.
We didn't plan that. Sorry. Jolene, you have anything you want to announce?
No.
All right. Thank you. We move to the Consent Calendar. Does anybody wish to remove any items A through E? No? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Andrew's moved it. Cheryl's seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're on item number 6. We obviously have no reports and committee reports since none of us have been on any committees. We'll go to number 7, Any Unfinished Business? Nothing? Okay. New business? Moving right along. Resignations, number 9, and you know what?
Your Honor? Yep.
I forgot these, so if you could do those for me, that'd be great.
There are five resignations. The first is from Larry Nelson from the Bristol Historic District Commission. The second is from Rose Parenti from the Retirement Board. The third is from Andrew Howe from the Planning Commission. The fourth is from Sebastian Panietto from the Inland Wetlands Commission. And the last one is from Susan Tyler from the Zoning Commission.
Excellent. Do we need a motion for this, or no? These are my appointments?
If you want to send thanks, you would have a motion.
Yep, so I'll entertain a motion to accept those resignations and send a letter of thanks for their participation.
So moved.
Second.
Andrew with Sebastian as a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, so now we get to appointments, and I'm going to ask Cheryl first for motion on the first.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, the position of the Fire Chief has opened up on December 31st after our outgoing Fire Chief, Mark Flynn, had announced his retirement. The Fire Chief is responsible for carrying out the day-to-day tasks of running our organization, our firefighting organization, and such tasks include supervising other officers and firefighters at emergency scenes, and recruiting, training, and equipping them for their respective duties. For the well-being of the community and for the safety and welfare of our firefighters, 10 months is far too long for this vital position to have remained open. Last week, the Fire Board made a recommendation for a chief. I understand that you, Mayor, have had the opportunity to meet with the candidate, discuss the recruitment with the Fire Board, and also have had discussions with several members of the Fire Department staff. All reports indicate that Richard Hart would make an outstanding chief for our department. Therefore, I would like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Richard Hart as the Fire Chief pending a background investigation, pre-employment screening, and approved contract agreement.
Thank you, Cheryl. So we have a motion by Cheryl. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jackie has a second. Any other comments from the council before we vote?
I would, I would just say, and hearing word from, from some personnel locally and, and some personnel in the greater Hartford area, Weathersfield Fire, Bradley International Airport Fire, that this candidate has a sound reputation. He has a forward-thinking approach to his, his work, which I think is necessary. And honestly, politics aside, I think our, our Fire Department is deserving of a Fire Chief who's solely dedicated to the public good and public safety. And going into the new year, I'm, I'm happy to see this, this move forward.
Any other comments? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Maybe a little bit improper, but we have Rick Hart here, so I'd love to have him come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, and thank you for affording me this opportunity to speak to this esteemed City Council. First off, congratulations, Mayor Caggianno, on your election last week, and congratulations to the newly-elected council. I thank you for your vote of confidence in appointing, in appointing me Fire Chief to the City of Bristol. This has been a dream of mine since I entered the fire service a very long time ago. The Bristol Fire Department has a stellar reputation across the state as an aggressive, hard-charging department that now I am fortunate enough and proud to lead. Together, we will work to move the department forward in an innovative and responsible manner. I look forward and am excited for this new chapter in the long history of the Bristol Fire Department. Excuse my back. I'd also like to thank the members of Local 773 for their support tonight and throughout this process. It won't be forgotten. Again, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Rick. My only other comment is I'm extremely happy not to be taking on chief responsibilities. I got enough to do. I will also say that it was great to meet Rick, and I think he's got to get the 48, 4,000 footers done like I did. So that'll be something we can talk about in the future. So next on my list is Part-Time Assistant Corporation.
Your Honor, just can we get an approval from everyone? A vote?
We, I thought, I thought we already did. I could be wrong. You did a motion second, and I brought them up after, which was a little bit out of order. I apologize. But I think we did do that, right?
We did take.
Good.
Everyone did take. Okay.
Thank you, Therese. Keep me honest.
We can do it again if you'd like.
So as Mayor, I have to appoint a part-time Assistant Corporate Counsel. Gives me great pleasure to appoint Ed Kurwick Jr. to replace Wylandale Clift, who resigned. And Ed will be appointed to a two-year term through 11/23. So welcome, Ed Kurwick. All right. The other acting mayor's appointment, the other appointment is Acting Mayor, and I want to announce that I appoint Cheryl Tebow to replace Dave Proleski to a term that ends on 11/22. So congratulations, Cheryl, as our acting mayor. And I have one more of these, to appoint David James Garrett to replace Sebastian Panietto as a regular member who resigned on 11/21, an unexpired term to 5/22. So now we have appointments, and appropriate for me to read these all, and we can do these all together? Or how would you like to do it, Therese? Individually? Okay, so I'll read the first, then. Bristol Historic District Commission to appoint Catherine Norton as a regular member to replace Larry Nelson, who resigned, and this is an unexpired term to 1/23. So now I need a motion?
Move. Move it.
Cheryl?
Second.
Second. Andrew, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Approved. Next, I have Planning Commission to appoint Jeffrey Hayden to replace Andrew Howe as a regular member. Andrew resigned on 11/21, and this is an unexpired term to 7/31/22. Motion to approve? Jackie?
Second.
Second.
Sebastian gets the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Retirement Board, Retirement Board to appoint Thomas Barnes Jr. to replace Rose Parenti, who resigned. This will be an unexpired term to 7/25. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Cheryl, and then Andrew for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And I believe the last one, to, and I'll put these two together, that's fine. Zoning Board of Appeals to reappoint or replace Gerald Raffinello, a three-year term that expires in 7/24. To reappoint or replace Tim Adamitis, who's an alternate member, that's a three-year term as well that expires in 7/24. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Jackie?
Second.
I'll give that one to Sebastian, second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Did I get them all, Therese? I think I did. Very good. All right. No need to do anything there. Item number 11. This is a resolution regarding the establishing of the Edgewood Roof Replacement Building Committee, approval to apply for a grant to Commissioner of Administrative Services, authorize, authorization to prepare schematic drawings, approval of education specifications, and authorizations for mayor or acting mayor to execute. And I'm going to have you read the next ones for me, Therese. You're better at it than I am. So resolution will need a motion and then a roll-call vote, right?
There's a resolution on screen, and it's actually, it says, "Establishment," the first four paragraphs.
So I need somebody to go ahead and read that?
Okay, so it's resolved?
Yep. The 11.
Yep. "Resolved the City Council authorizes to establish the BOE Operations Committee as the Edgewood Roof Replacement Building Committee with regard to the Edgewood Roof Replacement at the Edgewood School, 345 Mick Street." Keep going. "Resolved, continue to resolve, the City Council authorizes the Bristol Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept a grant for the Edgewood School roof replacement located at the Edgewood School, 345 Mick Street." "Resolved, the City Council authorizes at least the preparation of the schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Edgewood School roof replacement located at Edgewood School, 345 Mick Street." "Resolved, the City Council approves the education specifications for the Edgewood School roof replacement located at Edgewood School, 345 Mick Street."
So we do a roll-call vote, start with my right. That works, or you call it? You call it. Go ahead. Well, yeah, let's go left to right, then. Susan? Yes or no?
Yes.
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 And the chair votes yes.
Or did you want to do the council assignments now, or do you want to do them at the end of the? You can?
Let's do, let's do them now. We'll get them, we'll get them over, so.
And then one, one other thing, I'm sorry, I interrupted you before you, you got to answer how you were voting.
Yes, sorry. All right. So for the council assignments, which ones do we need to do again, Therese?
Actually, it would be all of them. You've got a full, full page.
Okay, and we can read them all off and then do them together? So I'll go ahead and read them off. So our liaisons, Board of Park Commissioners is Andrew Howe. Housing Authority of Bristol is Susan Tyler. Commission on Aging, I will be on that, the mayor. Board of Library Directors, Sebastian Panietto. Board of Water Commissioners, Jackie Olson. Human Resources Agency, we don't need one there, sorry. Board of Education is Jolene Lucetani. Commissions on Disabilities, Andrew Howe. Mayor's Task Force on AIDS, the mayor will take that one. City Cemetery Commission, Sebastian Panietto. will take that one. City Cemetery Commission, Sebastian Panietto. Bristol Burlington Health District, the Mayor will also do that one. City Energy Commission, Sebastian Panietto. Diversity Council, Diversity Council, excuse me, is Sebastian Panietto. Arts and Culture Commission is Jackie Olson. Mayor's Task Force on Opioids will be the Mayor. The Veterans Council will be Andrew Howe. And so, motion? To, I'll keep them. Motion? Jackie moves it?
Second.
Second is Cheryl this time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Committees on this, or-
There's two Mayor's appointments. Those are your-
Yep, so I'll call those out. So, the Mayor appoints Cheryl Tebow to the Pine Lake Area Study Committee, and Code Enforcement, I'm appointing myself. On the committees, we have Salary Committee, Cheryl Tebow, Susan Tyler, Jackie Olson. Ordnance Committee, Susan Tyler, Jackie Olson, Cheryl Tebow. Real Estate Committee, Susan Tyler, Sebastian Panietto, and Cheryl Tebow. Building Committee, Andrew Howe, Jackie Olson, Jolene Lucetani. Tenure Capital Improvement and Strategic Planning Committee, Sebastian Panietto, Jackie Olson, and Cheryl Tebow. I'm the Chair of that committee. School Readiness, which is part of the Board of Education, is Andrew Howe. Public Hearing and Assessment Committee is Sebastian Panietto, Jolene Lucetani, and Cheryl Tebow. Do we need a motion for this?
Yes.
Yes, let's just stay consistent.
Still moved.
Cheryl moves it?
Second.
Second. Andrew, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Members on the boards. So, the Bristol Development Authority is Cheryl Tebow. Board of Fire Commissioners is Jackie Olson. The Board of Police Commissioners is Susan Tyler. The Board of Public Works is Sebastian Panietto, Jolene Lucetani, Cheryl Tebow. The Mayor is the Chair. Retirement Board is Jackie Olson. Transportation Committee is Cheryl Tebow. Youth Commission, Jolene Lucetani. We have the Green Hill School Building Project Committee, Cheryl Tebow. Memorial Boulevard School Building Committee is Jackie Olson. Northeast Middle School Building Committee is Jolene Lucetani. Stafford School Roof Replacement Committee is Jolene Lucetani. And the South Side, HVAC Committee is Andrew Howe. Motion?
Still moved.
Jackie?
Second.
Is Andrew Howe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And anybody opposed? No, I'm happy those are all done. You were good there. All right, so we'll move to item number 12 on the agenda. And if we can have somebody, I think which is better, just to read the resolution, correct? Would that work?
Yes, and that one starts at the bottom of the page, at the CHMS.
Yep.
So it's the resolution regarding establishing Chippins Hill Heating Fuel Underground Storage Tank Replacement Building Committee. Approval to apply for the grant to the Commissioner of Administrative Services. Authorization to prepare schematic drawings and approval of education specifications and authorization for the Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute.
Andrew?
All right. Resolved, the City Council authorizes to establish the BOE Operations Committee as the Chippins Hill Heating Fuel Underground Storage Tank Replacement Building Committee with regard to the Chippins Hill Underground Storage Tank located at Chippins Hill Middle School, 551 Peestale Street. Resolved, the City Council authorizes the Bristol Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administration Services to accept a grant for the Chippins Hill Heating Fuel Underground Storage Tank Replacement Project with regards to the Chippins Hill Underground Storage Tank A1 at Chippins Hill Middle School, 551 Peestale Street. Resolved, the City Council authorizes at least the preparation of the schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Chippins Hill Heating Fuel Underground Storage Tank Replacement located at Chippins Hill Middle School, 551 Peestale. Resolved, that the City Council approves the education specification for the Chippins Hill Heating Fuel Underground Storage Tank Replacement located at Chippins Hill Middle School, 551 Peestale Street.
Second.
Roll call vote here. We'll start from our right this time. Jackie?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you can make a comment.
I'm unclear as to what this actually is, so I don't know if I want to vote at this time. Is it to actually replace the tank?
Yep. Let's, let's, go ahead. Start with Tim. I get to say hello to Tim, which is great. Good to see you again.
Good to see everybody. Congratulations and-
Thank you.
Welcome. I just want to explain that these are resolutions for us to apply to the state for the grants for these projects.
Okay.
They include three projects. One is the replacement of the diesel fuel tank, which supplies the diesel fuel to the generator there. So, we're doing these motions, they sound a little silly, but it's the specific requirements as stated by the state so that we can get in line for the grants. So, they're rolling grants. The other project is the Chippins Hill Oil Tank Replacement. It's a 10,000 gallon oil tank. We take the old one, put the new one in. And then we have Edgewood School. So, the Edgewood School is a roof, brand-new roof on top of that. We'll be doing some flashing and new mechanical replacements, as you know, Cheryl, how we do that, so that we can make the whole building sealed on the roof, and all of the new equipment up there is waterproof. So, that's basically what we're doing, and they're just a formality for us to get in line for the grants for the state, so.
Great. Thank you.
You welcome any other questions? Thanks.
Thanks, Tim. All right, so I think we're ready to give our votes now. Jackie?
Yes.
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 And Chair votes yes. All right, so we're on to 13.
And this one is for the next project, which is a resolution regarding establishing Chippins Hill Diesel Fuel Underground Storage Tank Replacement Building Committee. Approval to apply for grant to Commissioner of Administrative Services. Authorization to prepare schematic drawings, approval of educational or education specifications, and authorization for the Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute.
Just got it up and like to read it. Sebastian?
Of course. CHMS Diesel Fuel UST Replacement. Resolved, the City Council authorizes to establish the BOE Operations Committee as the Chippins Hill Diesel Fuel Underground Storage Tank Replacement Building Committee with regard to the Chippins Hill Underground Storage Tank B2 located at Chippins Hill Middle School, 551 Peestale Street. Resolved, the City Council authorized, authorizes the Bristol Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept a grant for the Chippins Hill Diesel Fuel Underground Storage Tank Replacement located at Chippins Hill Middle School, 551 Peestale Street. Resolved, the City Council authorizes at least the preparation of the schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Chippins Hill Diesel Fuel Underground Storage Tank Replacement located at Chippins Hill Middle School, 551 Peestale Street. Resolved, the City Council approves the education specifications for the Chippins Hill Diesel Fuel Underground Storage Tank Replacement located at Chippins Hill Middle School, 551 Peestale Street.
Thank you. We're going to start with our left this time. Susan Tyler, yes or no?
Yes.
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 And Mayor votes yes.
The next resolution is regarding the submission of a grant application for $15,056 to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for a federal fiscal year 2021 Emergency Management Performance Grant. And there is a resolution, it's on the second page of the item online.
I think Cheryl's located it.
Okay. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application for $15,056 to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for the federal fiscal year 2021 Emergency Management Performance Grant funding is hereby approved, and that the Mayor or Acting Mayor is hereby authorized to enter into, deliver, and execute such application in any and all other documents relating to this application grant, including but not limited to any final grant documents, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of this application grant. Be it further resolved, that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Thank you, and we're going to start to our right this time. Jackie?
Yes.
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 Andrew was yes. Cheryl's yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh. No, she can't vote.
Not voting at this point. And Mayor votes yes. Didn't get sworn in last night, so. All right, we'll move on to 16.
15. Resolution regarding entering into a memorandum of agreement for Homeland Security Grant Funds for DEMHS Region 3.
And I think Andrew, you got this one?
Yep. Resolution, be it hereby resolved that the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, may enter into with and deliver to the State Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management, and memorandum of agreement regarding Homeland Security Grant Funds for DEMHS Region 3, including any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate for FFY 2021. And be it further resolved that Jeffrey Cagiano, the Mayor of the City of Bristol, hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, and to do and perform all acts and things which are deemed to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. The town clerk further certifies that Jeff Cagiano holds the office of Mayor, and he has held the office since November 8, 2021. Be it further resolved, this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Thank you, Andrew. We'll start from our left this time. Susan Tyler?
Yes.
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 And Chair votes yes.
Okay, and our last resolution for the evening is a resolution regarding authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute open space and watershed land acquisition grant agreement and conservation and public recreation easement for 63.9 acre parcel known as Pigeon Hill Shrub Road.
This one's got a long, two resolutions, the top page on this one?
This one has, it's two paragraphs.
Two paragraphs. Okay, so that's the first page.
The last one dated at Bristol. They don't have to read.
You ready, Andrew, then? Go ahead.
Be it hereby resolved that the Mayor of the City of Bristol is authorized to execute on behalf of the Bristol, City of Bristol in the open space and watershed land acquisition grant agreement, OSWA 569, and the conservation and public recreation easement and agreement, and all grant-related documents for the 63.9 acre parcel known as Pigeon Hill Shrub Road, Bristol. 35.6 acres to be purchased by the city, and 28.3 acres into the town of Burlington will be purchased by the Environmental Learning Centers of Connecticut with DEEP, and to manage said land as all open space land pursuant to Section 7, 131D of the General Connecticut Statutes. Be it further resolved that the City of Bristol is authorized to enter into an agreement with the selected contractor to demolish a residence, barn, and structures located on said property, and to clean up the site so it is safe for public use, and the city has set aside the necessary funds to do so in advance of its purchase. Dated Bristol, Connecticut, the 9th day of November, 2021.
I think we're starting on the right this time. Jackie?
Yes.
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 And Chair votes yes.
And the last item is to approve the purchase and sale agreement between the City of Bristol and Wheeler Clinic Incorporated for the sale of Parcel 3, Center Square, and authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute.
I get a motion on this one.
Still moved.
This is the Wheeler Clinic one.
Yeah, but we're moving, we still move in second.
Okay.
And then discussion.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Through the Chair, please. And I know, Justin, hello. You know, I really appreciate the hard work and research that went into this plan, and to sell the property, Wheeler Clinic, and I know you're going to probably answer some questions tonight, okay? So, I'm going to have more questions, okay? So maybe we let him do his presentation, and then I'll speak, or what do you want to do?
Yeah, I think that'd be good, Justin.
Okay.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about the project?
Yeah, so, congratulations to everyone here. Thanks for having me speak. It could be such a short transition, right, of administrative leadership, so. And that's me talking, I can only imagine how you feel, so I haven't had a chance to speak with you all about this very much. But we've been working with Wheeler Health, as they like to be known now, on a project for what we call Parcel 3 on Center Square. So it's about 1.7 acres, almost direct, well, no. It would kind of be directly across from where Better Half Brewing is, to use them as an indicator, to build about a 35,000 to 40,000 square foot sort of flex building that would be Wheeler Health's administrative corporate headquarters, but also Wheeler Health would transfer the existing services, the medical services that they provide now in Bristol, to that location. So, we began working with Wheeler probably six months ago, about that timeframe. The project didn't start out at this level. It started out smaller, but through some of our negotiations and discussions, we arrived at this point. The project would involve about 165 new full-time professional positions coming to, not only to downtown Bristol, but to Bristol in general. And then, obviously, the existing positions that are here would remain here. They would just be relocated to that facility. So, can I answer any other questions, Cheryl, or?
Well, so the 55 employees, I take it they're coming from 10 North Main Street, 225 North Main Street, and Race Street?
Yes.
And so, those are all privately-owned office buildings?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. The 165 positions that are new to Bristol, but are they already filled at their Plainville locations, or does this open up new jobs for Bristol residents?
So, yes to both. So, the, most of the positions coming over are existing positions that are located elsewhere, but Wheeler Health leadership has discussed the opportunity for new hires, both on the medical side and then potentially some on the corporate side, but I think mainly on their medical side. A much lower number than, obviously, the number that are coming over that are existing.
Mm-hmm. It's just, as you know, we're just all brand-new in these roles, and I'm just going to speak for myself, and I don't know if, you know, how my fellow counterparts feel. Just the fact of a nonprofit downtown in the right smack in the middle of property, I'm just having trouble with that a little bit, because even Bristol Health, that's on the corner, eventually, after their tax credits are, you know, expire or come to maturity, they will be a tax-paying entity as well. And, you know, one of the things we hear is, you know, our homeowners are bearing a lot of the pressure. So, I'm just saying that, but I want to go in with an open mind, okay? And I recognize that there are some very good reasons this may be a perfect fit. So, what I'd like to have is the benefit for me, a little bit more time, to kind of look under the hood and kick the tires, and ask a lot more questions, and maybe have you give us a little bit more of a presentation so that we can grasp what your committee felt was important, and why this is vital to downtown. So, would it, would it hurt the project if we asked to, you know, table this for a month, to allow us that opportunity to meet with you, hear the whole, you know, pitch, and ask our questions, and give us time to review the concept?
Would not hurt the project at all, and I think it makes a lot of sense, actually. So, I kind of saw the possibility of that question, because it makes so much sense. So, just so you know, we talked with the Wheeler Health leadership. They completely understood. So not only will it not hurt the project, I think it will help, right? So, I would welcome that opportunity. The Mayor and I had a minute-
Yep.
-to maybe discuss that potential option.
And I think my only question is, do we need to have a special meeting to have that meeting with them, because we are a six-member. We'll ask the Corporate Counsel for that. We can do that offline, but yeah.
But Wheeler Health would love to take part in that. So, however it's done, there's a couple different ways we can do it, but I think it makes sense.
Yeah, definitely does. So I think at this point, I would have to entertain a motion to postpone this agenda item.
I make a motion to postpone this agenda item.
Cheryl?
And are you postponing it to the next meeting?
To the next meeting, yes. Next meeting. Susan had the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Motion carries.
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks, Justin. And we'll figure out how to set that up and get some more information. All right, so I think next we have executive session, so I need to hear from counsel on who's going to go into executive session, correct?
Mayor, my custom has always been to include the entire legal staff in executive sessions. I request that you allow that to occur.
No problem.
In addition, we have outside counsel, Eric Bartlett, who should be here. We don't see him in the audience just yet.
Who might have just walked in?
Eric is back there, okay. So he's going to be coming in as well.
Okay, and then all of the council members, right?
Obviously.
Yep. So, a motion to go into executive sec?
Mayor, I'm sorry. Tom DeNoe is going to come in on the second. Mayor, I'm sorry, Tom Denote is going to come in on the second item.
Okay, so which is?
So the first item is Eric Bartlett, the second is going to be Tom Denote.
Okay, very good.
And Eric will leave for the second.
Gotcha. Thank you very much, Ed. Motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Andrew?
Second.
Second from Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Let's go on to executive session. All right, I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Cheryl with the motion, Andrew with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So, no, no votes were taken in our executive session, and we will move to item number 18, and I'll entertain a motion on 18, which is Sue.
I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement in the matter of Mary Jo Warner versus City of Bristol for any and all workers' comp claims